I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order, please. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and equal civil liberties and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone here in at home. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
President.
Trustee Gett.
President.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
President.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
President.
Trustee Riker.
President.
And Trustee Carter.
All right, good to see everyone. The next thing, piece of business is approval of the Board of Trustees minutes for Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Please motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or correction to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
Yes, I have a letter here from, let's see, it's us, Uftrang Chevrolet in Washington, and it says, "Dear local fire department, it is with heartfelt gratitude that we write this letter to you after our devastating fire that occurred on January 5th, 2018 in the building that housed Uftrang Chevrolet in Washington. For those of you who worked there and witnessed the tragedy unfold, time somewhat stood still as we could not believe what was happening to the building that so many called their second home. We had no idea what to expect in the days and weeks to follow. It was truly overwhelming experience. One thing that definitely stood out in the hours that followed the first report of the fire was the bravery and heroics demonstrated by all the firefighters and fire departments that responded to help in our time of need. It is not too dramatic to say that each of you risked your lives in brutally sub-zero conditions in order to do what you were trained to do. It is humbling, it is humbling to be the recipient of such heroic efforts, and we want you to know we appreciate all that you do, you did to fight the fire. There have been many positive things that have come to the Uftrang Auto Group in the days since the fire. Most importantly, we are grateful that there was not any injury reported during this terrific fire. The staff of Uftrang Chevrolet, our customers, and each of the firefighters were able to go home from the scene with no injuries, the greatest blessing of all. I am proud to say that Uftrang Auto Group was able to offer the sale of T-shirts, sweatshirts, and hooded sweatshirts to promote the great firefighters that responded in our time of need. We were able to sell almost 1,200 shirts and raise some money to say thank you to all the departments who responded. Please accept an enclosed check as a small token of our appreciation for what your fire department did for us on January 5th. Please use this money to replace supplies, purchase some needed equipment, or reward your team with some kind of meal to thank them from us. It is entirely up to you. Thank you again for all you do to serve the community and the entire area when the need arises. Our words will never adequately describe how much you mean to us, and this is signed by Gary Uftrang, Joe Knapp, Kurt Johnson. And they send a $300 check.
That's a very nice letter, so thank you to Chief Walters and his crew for answering the call to help Washington. I do want to interject, I know they answered a call very recently, the week before last to help out in West Peoria for a house fire there, so thanks to them for all they do. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, on to announcements. I do want to take this time to remind everyone of an upcoming movie night on June 2nd that will be here in Tower Park, and we have sponsors for that, so there is no charge, so please everyone show up and bring your family, and we'll hope for a little bit warmer weather for this movie. We'll go right into the trustees' report. The first is economic and community development, to Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items that I'd like to read tonight, so I will go ahead with that. The first item is the Commercial Area Studies Open House. Building on work completed as part of the Peoria Heights Commercial Corridors Master Plan, completed in 2016, the village is in the process of preparing commercial area studies. These studies are a further refinement to the Commercial Corridors Master Plan and are intended to assist with its implementation. As part of this planning process, the village is requesting comments and input from residents, business owners, developers, and others who have a vested interest in the future of Peoria Heights. All are invited to attend and provide vital feedback as the village works with its planning consultant, Housiol Levine Associates, to develop conceptual site plans for three important commercial areas in the village, including sites around Heritage Square, Alwyn &amp; Sons Meat Company, and Williams Brothers &amp; Pearl Companies. The village will be hosting an open house on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM here at Village Hall. The open house will provide an opportunity for community members to talk to the village's consultants, as well as village staff, and offer any comments or questions they may have on the new commercial area studies. In addition, large format poster boards depicting draft recommendations from the studies will be on display. Second item I have here is regarding the Make Art Happen in the Heights. On Friday, May 11th, Peoria Heights hosted Make Art Happen in the Heights, celebrating the Central Business District as an arts, culinary, and entertainment destination. The event lasted from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, included artists in the Central Business District, tours, and culinary art. Many of the restaurants featured dishes or drinks that were tied to one of the sculptures while showcasing their new street seats. Cayenne featured a blue sparkling lemon spritzer drink called Cajas Azul, which means "blue boxes" in Spanish. This drink reflected the flattened boxes sculpture. Paparazzi gave away free desserts. You mentioned to the server that you had an impulse for dessert. Seven featured a pasta dish that featured Love Nest 3, and Hearth also had drink specials. Approximately 50 people were present for the proclamation ribbon cutting, including WMBD, who did two interviews, Mayor Phelan and Sarah. Approximately 35 artists lined the Central Business District showcasing all mediums of art, and approximately 30 people participated in the tour. These tours will be offered weekly on Thursdays at 5:30 PM and will also be available by appointment. That is all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks for that report, Trustee Mariscal. If I may tag along, I especially want to thank Sarah and our Arts Committee for helping with the planning, the kickoff of the Sculpture Walk, and the events that we had Friday, and also Public Works, who throughout this whole process have been there to really help the village and kick all of this off. This is a really wonderful story for Peoria Heights because, I think we all know it, but it's worth telling again, that a couple who do not live in the community, but they come here quite often to eat, ended up donating nearly $70,000 to the village to acquire these sculptures because they like what we're doing here. And this, by the way, led to another gift to the school, so I happen to be down at the school Saturday for the graduation and saw the new sculpture there. That is an additional thing that happened. So to see all the artists and the people visiting here in the village Friday night was fantastic, and again, thanks to Public Works for getting all those placed, not an easy job, but they did outstanding work, so I just wanted to mention that. And if there are any questions for Trustee Mariscal on his report, that would be the time.
Are we under contract with this planning consultant, and are we still paying them?
Housiol Levine?
Yes.
That was a grant that we received through Tri-County for the small area studies. Director Smith, you'd probably be better able to explain that, but they're finishing up on the small area studies, so we did that.
Because we did the corridor plan two years ago, so I was just wondering if this is still part of that.
There was a grant for the corridor study that I think Kyle and Matt wrote, and then there was an additional grant for the small areas that they're finishing up on. They'll bring their final product to the open house. So I'm not exactly sure if all the bills have been paid.
It was, I mean, they're completely separate projects, but they came from the same pot of money that's funding them, and that's through Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. So Tri-County Regional Planning Commission is actually the one receiving bills for that work.
Oh, okay. So that's why I haven't seen their name in the bill.
Correct. I think there is a very small matching portion that, I don't remember what it is at this time, Matt was handling more of that than I was, but that typically doesn't come in until the end and the contracts closed out and Tri-County has exhausted all of their funds. So, but these are state planning funds. Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, they got a new executive director a few years back, and he made it a priority in every one of their budgets to hold back some funds that member communities such as ourselves, we may not, we may go many years, and we have, without getting actual road construction funding. It's hard to be competitive in the region with 18 other jurisdictions vying for the same dollars, but he made a commitment to make these smaller planning dollars available to local communities, and they've done just that, and it's worked out very well for us.
And again, thanks to the people that work here at Peoria Heights who saw the value in those grants and applied for them, and we were successful in getting that money, and I think we've used it very, very well. And I also happen to sit on the Tri-County Planning Commission Policy Committee, and I know the commission frequently points to what Peoria Heights has done with these grants as a, as a good example of how to use that money. We can ask Stephanie tomorrow if there are any bills out there, it would be a really small amount, and I, again, I think that Tri-County had been the passer, so most of that should be paid for through the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. When you talked about the future walks to be, you said, what night was that?
Thursdays at 5:30 PM.
And that was with appointment?
No.
Or those are happening and then additional?
Correct, correct.
Thursdays, is it every Thursday?
The way I read this, it looks like that.
It's for the summer.
Okay.
I think they end in like September.
So Thursday, and then additional with appointment, okay.
Correct. Okay, anyone else? All right, on to police, Trustee Carter and Chief Sutton.
Okay, actually, I have, we have a few things that I'm going to read here that's happening. Just kind of read this to you guys, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but we would like to make the Peoria Heights residents aware of ongoing phone scams. The caller identifies themselves as Peoria Heights detective and is trying to obtain personal information. The caller is also threatening arrest if this information isn't given to pay an outstanding fine. The Peoria Heights Police will never solicit fine payment over the telephone. If you receive a call of this nature, please contact the Peoria Heights Police Department. I encourage if any area, if this happens, to call their dispatcher, call the police department to see what happens, but right now, it's happening locally here in the Heights. So we encourage everybody, if it happens, to call the police department and let them know. Do you want to add something to that part?
The reason why it's Peoria Heights specific, because they are impersonating an actual police officer of ours, one of our detectives, so that's one reason that it's hit just local residents, but these scams go on year-round, and I know that they're in the Tri-County area, but this, this one recently just popped up, it is Peoria Heights specific, so they're definitely identifying themselves as an actual officer that works for us, so.
Are they targeting particularly the elderly, or just anyone?
No, there's no particular target, it's random.
Thank you, Trustee Carter, and what else?
Okay, next thing, which is kind of exciting, the Peoria Heights Police Department is re-implementing the use of the bike patrol in the business district, Tower Park, and the trail. So you will see increased presence in the next couple of weeks of them riding around.
Yeah, this is something the community hasn't seen for quite a while. We used to have bike patrol a few years ago, I think we got away from that due to lack of interest, but with everything going on with the bikes, the trail, the increased activity, I think it's, it's a good use of our manpower, so I think the community will enjoy that. It went over well when we had it a few years ago, so I just wanted everyone to know that you'll see an increase in that patrol.
And we are going to move it into the residential area also, right?
Correct. Oh, nice.
That is true, it will not take the place of any patrol vehicle, so we won't have anybody racing a mountain bike to a 911 call, so we'll definitely have plenty of squad cars on the street, it'll be in addition to, so.
I'd like to hear that, thank you, Trustee Carter for that, what else?
Okay, another thing I'd like to announce is the police belimbing fundraiser will be held May 26th at Poor Brothers from 2 to 6. There'll be live music, food, and a dump tank, and maybe Powers will be in the dump tank, but we don't know that yet.
I thought he was going to be on the bike. See, he's going to be on the bicycle, right?
Well, maybe, but that's a different story.
And what day of the week is that?
May 26th, which is a Saturday.
Saturday, okay, thank you. Anything else, Trustee Carter?
I think that's all we have for now.
Anything else from you, Chief Sutton? Questions for Trustee Carter? Good report, thank you very much. Okay, on to building maintenance, Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan, I really don't have anything about building and maintenance, I just do want to say that Mayor Phelan, Dr. Heath, and I met last Wednesday, and we're trying to figure out a way to inspire these kids who do well, not just sports, but academics, and we kind of bounce a few things around, if you guys got any suggestions besides always, you know, we don't always want to have to bring up plaques or whatever, but we would like to encourage them and congratulate them, because we've had some kids, I think Seven Hicks has won the 100 and 200 meter for the conference, second year in a row, and I think she's probably going to win state. And then we also asked for notifications to get from the teachers, and Dave Carroll sent this, that last Saturday was state, and he said, he sent this, Jayla Pearson, state champion, 7th grade girls 100 meter dash, Jayla Pearson co-state champion, 7th grade girls 200 meter dash, Rissa Foster qualified for state in the 8th grade girls 400 meter dash, Jayla Pearson, Haja Reynolds, Ariana Gett, Kennedy Henry, and Rissa Foster placed 8th in 8th grade girls by 4 by 100 meter relay, Bo Beany, Caleb Gillen, Riley Counters, Isaiah Braces, and Kamarian Richardson. Now, I got, he says qualified for state, I think they won their heat, I think they won state. I was there, we were getting rained on. Our 7th grade girls team tied for 7th place overall in state, so our whole 7th grade girls team got state, just thank you, Dave Carroll. These young men and women competed in some really adverse conditions, I don't know how bad it was here in the Heights, because I was busy over there in the east side, getting stormed on, and they raced in the rain, against the winds, and they really did a good job, and they represented their school, their community well. I mean, I'm sitting there whining because I'm sitting there just getting rained on, they're out there competing in it, and I just, I'd like to congratulate them, I don't know what else we can do for these kids, because this is stuff they're doing, and still, these kids are A/B students, and I think that should be commended for it, I don't know how to commend them, you know.
They'll be getting letters, Trustee Gett, and you mentioned them here tonight, but...
Well, I plan on mentioning them every time I hear about them, like Seven Hicks, she's, she's going to be outstanding, she is already, and Ariane, well dang, I can't remember her last name, she's a junior, she's going to be, she is really good, and they're just knocking down records, so that's all I got to say.
Well, you said a lot, and I want to thank Trustee Gett, he's agreed to be our point person with the school, we had a great meeting with Dr. Heath, and we have a good relationship with them, but we just want to make sure that when young people in our community do something significant, whether it's academics, or whether it's scouting, or whether it's grades, or whether they do just something nice in their neighborhood, we want to try and be aware of that, so sometimes it'll be, it'll be a letter, sometimes it'll be Trustee Gett mentioning their name at a meeting, and sometimes it'll be a reception here if it's something really significant, we'll have, we'll have it up here, but I want to thank you, Jeff, for agreeing to kind of oversee this.
Not a problem.
Any questions for Trustee Gett? Okay, next would be fire, Trustee Riker.
Thank you, Mayor. On May 12th, the Peoria Heights Fire Department hosted the quarterly Mavis Fire Chiefs meeting here at the Village Hall. As the mayor mentioned, they also, on May 4th, provided mutual aid to West Peoria for a house fire. They are also going to send Dalton Carlson to EMS Lead Instructor School this weekend. He will be our only lead instructor. This helps us to complete our required CEUs in-house for much less cost, as he will be able to teach our first responders and EMTs as well. So good luck to Dalton. That's all I have.
Anything else, Trustee Riker?
That's it.
Questions for Trustee Riker?
I do have a question, I was asked about this, apparently there was a fire here at Villa Verdoe this week, were we involved in that, or?
He didn't, he didn't say that we got called for mutual aid for Peoria?
Wasn't that this morning?
That was this morning.
That was this morning, yeah.
Right.
Last night, this morning.
Last night, I was just curious.
I haven't heard, but I would not be surprised, but I haven't heard, I do know...
It's kind of close to the borders.
Yeah, very close.
I was just curious.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. On to Public Works, Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have, we are flushing hydrants this week, tomorrow they will be flushing hydrants down below the hill. They're, they're kind of leaving them open a little longer than normal, just because we've been doing all the work on the water tower, and we, during the process of the, while they were working on the tower, the village was being fed by the other water tower, so we had water going in opposite directions and flowing in ways that it hasn't flowed in a long time, so there was a lot of dirt coming out. Some of it was just the iron and the water that people were seeing, it was never anything dangerous or anything, but people were noticing it, so the crews are doing a really thorough hydro flushing right now. Yeah, I noticed a lot of people buying bottled water during the construction.
I was hearing it, I was hearing it at home, so.
So was I, yeah, but we're close to the towers, but anyway, yeah, that's all I have for, for now.
All right, thank you. Director Smith, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, questions for these two?
I will say it's cleared up, I don't have to hear it anymore.
It's a lot nicer, yes.
I kept trying to give them Kyle's number, and he...
Yep.
That's what you're there for, so.
I promised you. Just be patient.
Are they all finished with everything now?
It's like just a couple tiny little things, back me as far as water stuff, yeah, I mean, the tanks are all buttoned up and they're back in service, so it's just touching up a few paint spots and that sort of thing now.
While we have you two, you all should be, you should also be called out for the street seats, I know your crew has taken on a whole lot different responsibilities other than plowing and watering things, and the street seats were another one, could you give us a quick update on the rest of the seats and a little bit of a report on how you placed them and got them out?
Sure. Jim's Bistro, I'll just give you a rundown of each box real quick if I can.
Yeah.
Jim's Bistro, his is out, he's had, I think, real good results, he's had good participation, folks really wanted to be out there. His is all painted, I think he's still going to do some signage and advertising, that sort of thing on it. He had spent quite a bit of money, he had all custom high-top tables and seating made for the street seat, he actually used old bowling alley. So pretty heavy-duty tables, looks real nice. Coming down the street, Cayenne, they have theirs out, it's the one that randomly says him on the side, I don't know where the box came from or what company that is, but if you see inside their box, they had a bunch of custom work done before it even got delivered, so it has all built-in benches, they had tables made, it's got lighting built-in, electrical outlets. They are working on the outside and the inside, continuing to decorate it, so it will, it looks a little raw right now, but they're working on it. And then, of course, Hugh Higgins at Hearth, he had all the panels made for his, the cedar panels to kind of emulate, I guess, a wine barrel, and so he bought all new seating, table chairs.
I rarely correct you, a whiskey.
Yes, how could I forget?
You're normally correct.
They are a whiskey bar, yes, that's how they are, yes, thank you.
Much different.
Correct, correct, right. So those, those three are out, we still have three that are down in our shop right now, Public House, Sullivan's, and Seven's. And Public House and Sullivan's, they have been down there this week working, they both hired contractors, so they're down there working on the insides, they're putting floors in them.
Joe's?
Yeah, Joe, Seven?
Joe's Italian something.
Yeah, yeah, used to be Seven. Anyway, and he has a contractor as well that's lined up, they haven't started on theirs yet, but I have talked to his contractor, so they hope to get started in the next week or so. So they're coming along, I mean, I, I think it's what we were hoping for, I mean, they all have had vastly different ideas and concepts, which is great, if they all look different and unique, and I, I think they've been well-received so far. Hopefully seeing them in the flash, people understand the concept a little bit more, so.
Again, thanks for a good job on that.
Yeah, it, you know, we probably weren't making a lot of friends when we put them out, but now that we've gotten three or four of them out, we've gotten a lot quicker, so we don't have to stop traffic for years long, and we're of course trying to do it early in the morning, so fortunately, we'll only have to do it twice a year.
Okay, good.
Can I add something to that? As far as Cayenne's go, the painter that's going to be that, that will be one of our local Peoria Heights High School graduate.
Oh, really?
That's going to be doing that.
Can you tell us who?
So stay tuned, it's going to be really cool.
It's a secret?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So we'll see that happening real soon, in the next few days?
Yeah, she, yeah, because I think they need, they're going to have them done like June 1 or something?
That's random.
Is there a date?
No.
I don't know, I think she's just going to start working on it, but it's going to be really cool.
Okay, thanks for telling us that.
But it's a high school, Peoria Heights High School graduate, art student, so.
Excellent.
That makes it better.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we'll move on to administration, Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing here. The Village of Peoria Heights is excited to announce a new partnership with CGI Communications Incorporated to create a series of professionally-produced online videos to highlight everything our community offers residents, visitors, and business owners. This video program will encourage viewers to learn more about area attractions, economic development opportunities, and the quality of life in Peoria Heights. CGI Communications is currently working on a script that will tie into the video shoot next week. Filming will take place next Wednesday, May 23rd, from 10 to 5. They will film our downtown scenic landscape views, Grandview Drive, historic landmarks, the water tower, and interview some of our local business owners. If you're interested in possibly being an extra in the video, please get ahold of Sarah at your earliest convenience. There is no cost to the village to produce the videos, the costs are covered by selling sponsorships to the business community. Even if no sponsorships are received, there is still no cost to the village.
So thank you for that, and this opportunity came our way via Peoria County, so Peoria County hired this company through NACO, the National Association of Counties, and Peoria County felt that we were one of the communities in Peoria County that they wanted to highlight. So we've been spending a fair amount of time on this, especially Sarah, in getting this just right, so it won't be a long video, but it will be a video that will appear on the county's website and elsewhere, and I haven't looked, but Sarah told me, and I believe Chris looked, that these videos that they've produced elsewhere are really top-notch, first-class videos, so we're looking forward to this, so if you're able to have some fun next week and be an extra in some of these shoots, let Sarah know. Anything else, Diane?
No, sir, thank you.
Chief Sutton, anything on administration? Okay.
What was the name of that company?
CGI.
CGI.
Okay, we would be at comments from the audience. Going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. Any old business to come before the board? Hearing that, we'll get right into new business. The first is ordinance 2018-1553, and ordinance creating a seventh-class A1 liquor license with corporate limits of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee Mariscal, ask, so we get this on the floor, for a motion to approve this, and then we'll come back and talk about it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1553, creating a seventh-class A1 liquor license within the corporate limits of the Village of Peoria Heights.
May I have a second?
Second.
I do. I'm going to ask Chief Sutton to set this up, then we'll go to Mark, council, and then Sam is here tonight to tell us about his concept, so we count one, two, three, and then we'll be open for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. We met with Sam Heppel last week to kind of go over his business plan, to get an idea of what his vision was with this request. And Mayor, council, we met with Sam, and we asked him to come tonight to kind of go over that for the board. So, do you have anything else to add? Mark, before.
Well, just as a general matter, as the board will probably recall, the board controls the number of liquor licenses in each class that are outstanding, and then the mayor can grant applications when there is an available license. This is your chance to have input on whether or not to add another license for that particular class. The reason we're here is because of Mr. Heppel. So, I think it's fair to turn it over now.
Welcome, Sam. If you'd come forward to the podium and the microphone, or if you'd tell us a little bit about your concept.
Sure.
What's his name? Sam what?
H-E-P-P, A-R-D, Heppel. Thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Sam Heppel. I'm the owner of Clink Mobile Bar. Clink is a 1965-remodeled airstream trailer that's been converted into a mobile bar. So, it's got a bar window cut in the side of it. It's got 12 taps inside, and it can be, you know, towed to any private event and some public events. All will need prior approval beforehand. I can't just drive down the road and step anywhere and start serving beer. But it'll be, everything will be on draft. It'll be beer, wine, and cocktails, all on draft. And so, yeah, it can go up to any, you know, wedding receptions, rehearsal dinners, concerts, things like that. I know I talked with Mayor, and talked about maybe doing some public events, too. But, yeah, everything will be, need prior approval. I'll be leasing a space in Prospect Mall where the resale license will be based in a permanent location, and then every event will have a temporary liquor license for each event that will be approved up prior, so. And that's kind of the concept, so if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So, you're going to be stationed at the Prospect Mall, in their parking lot, or?
No, so, that'll kind of be just like a tasting room for clients. The trailer is housed in a garage right now, but that will be, every event will have to be pre-approved wherever it'll be, and then that liquor license will be like a temporary liquor license for each event. It'll be like a temporary permit. But the retail liquor license that I'm asking for is, will be primarily in that spot, where I will be selling, you know, tastings to clients and things like that.
In the trailer, or?
In the space in the Prospect Mall.
Okay.
He's required to have a bricks-and-mortar presence in the community in order to have this mobile unit, which will be licensed by the event.
Yeah.
So, the mobile thing, would it go outside of the Heights?
It could. It could go anywhere, really. I mean, it's really up to local jurisdiction where it can go. If it's not approved for the place, then I can't go there.
Are you going to have to come, are we going to have to have a meeting every time you need approval, or can the mayor, who's the liquor commissioner, just approve it on a need-to?
The mayor can approve each particular event, so he's got to get a special event license every weekend that he, or theoretically, a weeknight.
So, he doesn't need to come before us every time?
No.
But like, if he was going to go to Chilcotee or something, he would have to go to them for that? I mean, we're just giving him the license right now for this particular place.
For the bricks-and-mortar place.
It's not going to be open to the public to come in there. Is it just open to?
Appointment-only for clients, and we'll be doing, you know, I'll sell them tastings and stuff like that to wherever they want their bar catered as.
Okay, and then you would go to that, take your trailer, go to that event, wherever that may be with, okay.
And have to get, you know, approval from that local jurisdiction, whether it be Peoria County, Peoria Heights, Tassau County, you know, it's got to be approved with local jurisdiction before I can even go to that site. It's got to have site approval, everything like that, so.
So, your license here will be for your, wherever you're going to be stationed at at the?
Prospect Mall, right, yeah.
Just for people to come in and try it out, if you're just serving.
Yeah, correct.
But then, when your mobile unit moves to wherever, you have to go to that place and get?
Yeah, so say, just an example, if somebody wanted it.
It's a lot of hassle for, to do that.
It could be, really, if you think about it, it's really just a straight liquor license for that place. You know, that's year-round, that's what I have. And for every event, and it depends on each event, too. So, say I'm going to somebody's backyard for a party, and they want a cash bar, I'll need a temporary liquor license from Peoria Heights to do that event. If the client wants to buy all the alcohol to put on the vessel, and I'm just the bartending service, I don't need a liquor license for that, because I'm not profiting from the alcohol. So, it kind of depends, you know, it's an event, you know, so. It's a little tricky, but we're into it.
Sam, what businesses have you been in contact with?
Poor Brothers, I know Robbie pretty well, and they've been really excited about it. That's really the only business so far. I haven't really, you know, tried to get out there too much, because everything's still in the works, and I don't really have a set date yet. But, yeah, they're really excited. I talked to Kevin, too, and they're pretty excited about it down there, because they already have beer trucks that go down there, and that's kind of the same thing, just the distributor owns those trucks, and so it would be the same concept. They would just pay me a rental fee, I'd go down there, they would put their kegs on my vessel, and I'd be the bartending service for them, just like they would a distributor or anything else.
And we still get to collect the sales tax, as long as it's in the Heights, right?
Yes, correct.
Good point.
Okay, can I ask a question? This is, I have another question. Actually, Deb has a question, but I'll ask it. So, we have the music fest here.
That's a good question.
So.
I'm going to ask the chairman.
Good job, yeah. We would come to you, you would put your unit there, and then we could, you could sell the beer out of there when we want to.
He does the work, we get the sales tax?
Yeah, if they'll let me, yeah.
And when are you going to have us open?
I can, my tentative date, I'm hoping for, is end of June, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, could work.
Good answer.
Wouldn't that be more beneficial to us than having to work it and try and save, make money off that?
We don't have to have, I won't mention any names.
We don't have to do any volunteers? We don't have to have volunteers do this, and just, you know?
Local business, young person.
And we get the sales tax? Oh, wait a minute, am I pounding that too much?
Sounds good to me.
It sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
So, I guess this is a question for Chief Sutton, but if you, if he had like a backyard party or something, who's responsible, then, to verify that these people are of age to be drinking? Is that, does that become his responsibility, or the person having the party, or how does that work?
Go ahead, Sam.
That would become my responsibility, as anybody in Illinois now who serves alcohol has to be licensed by the state, and so I have the authority to serve or not serve somebody based on whether they're then overserved, or whether they're of age or anything like that. So, I will be licensed, every bartender on that will be licensed as well, so.
Okay.
When do we collect?
So.
We had a good question here.
Like, your alcohol line-up, that you're, you only use certain alcohol, right? Could change very to?
It'll vary. It really, it'll vary per event, whatever the client really wants. If it's a public event, I can always talk with whoever's running the event and see what they would want, but I really would like to promote, you know, a wide variety of things. I mean, I really want to do like draft wine, draft cocktails, draft beer, stuff that, you know, not your typical events, and try and mix it up as much as possible. So, I'll have a, you know, a license, or, you know, the client with the distributor, and then, you know, we can work with any event, and it can be pretty fluid like that, so.
So, do you have, you're working on it, do you have like a flyer or something? I'd be very interested to know more, so can I send us a flyer? Do you have any speed?
Sure. The date will have to be tentative so far, but.
On a different, on a different, but, I mean, this is interesting.
Yeah, and so, I'll have, you know, the website coming up here pretty quick, and I'll have, you know, contact information coming up, but I just wanted to get all the ducks in the row first before I.
Yeah, I would like a flyer, too. And Village Clerk Goff here had a good question about the taxes. I don't know if you can answer it.
I just said, when do you collect taxes? Because, you know, at, like, music fest, we don't sell a ticket with taxes, you know, we don't.
Most beer at a bar is like $3 or $3.25. I don't, it's never like an odd number, so I suppose it's like incorporated.
But he'll be dealing in cash, and he'll pay his taxes to the Illinois Department of Revenue, which will be dispersed to us.
There we go.
Correct, yeah. I have to have an Illinois business tax number, just like any other business, and then file the income tax and everything like that, so.
So, you just like would go on the number of drinks you served, and it would be, you know, like, obviously, you're not, you're not charging tax on top of, you're having a set amount.
Yeah, I'll have set prices, and that'll vary depending on each event. I mean, it could be, you know, like a package price, or per drink price, or just a rental rate and stuff like that, so.
Well, I think the thing to celebrate here is another young, very creative person wanting to bring their business to Peoria Heights. I was excited to hear it, but when I heard "mobile bar," we wanted to make sure we got Chief Sutton on board and the village council, and now that we understand, we're very excited about this. Are you able to elaborate a little bit more on your concept for the Prospect Mall at this time? Because I know you have some plans there.
Yeah, so I'm working with the owner, and we actually just met with the plumber today, and we're, you know, retrofitting the space, and then the mayor and I talked about maybe, you know, opening up some tastings in that little courtyard area, maybe, you know, I'll talk to the owner and see what he's kind of thinking, but maybe some like string lights in there, and it's always a great space. I mean, I live just down the road, and my wife and I are always walking through there, and, you know, it's always, you know, a great space, underutilized. You know, if we had some pub deals out there, we partnered with Olio and Vino or something, you know, had some, you know, maybe just like from 5 to 7 on like a Friday or something, just had drinks and stuff out there, and I think it'd be a cool, you know, atmosphere, and something just to spur, you know, things going on, so. So, yeah, I mean, I think that space would be really cool for something like this, so.
And that very could evolve into something just as exciting or as your concept for the mobile bar? I think so.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's got, you know, potential to move in other areas and just keep growing, and, you know, other ideas can branch off of that, and it can really spur some change and some movement and, you know, some other ideas, so.
Okay, any more questions for Sam? Any discussion? I think we're ready to vote, then.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Welcome to Peoria Heights, sir, and please let us know how we can help you as you continue forward with your endeavor.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, we really appreciate it.
All right. The next is a request for approval to allow CNG Concrete Construction Company Incorporated to complete driveway repair at 429 Marietta. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion, we approve CNG Concrete to do a driveway repair at 429 Marietta.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Back to you, Brian.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Mike is good.
What do you call it, worse?
CNG is asking, we had two bids. The director tried to get three, but it's such a small concrete job right now in the spring that we have two. That's the only people we can get to bid right off. So, CNG's bid was $5,000. Start came in at $7,800, and it's actually, it's a personal driveway, but we were doing water main repairs, and we tore things up. It was, it was, the leak went on and on, and we dug it up pretty good, so we feel we should fix it. The guy's been really patient, and that's what it's all about, so. I just make a motion, we can approve CNG to do the work, so we can get that started.
Okay. Questions for trustee Harn?
So, what's the deal with the 729 Marietta?
729?
Yeah, because it says we will install a 20-foot square, 20-square-foot sidewalk of 729 Marietta at no charge.
Yeah, that was.
429.
That was just a one-piece of sidewalk panel at 729, and CNG said they would just throw it in, but honestly, we had already gone ahead and fixed it anyway. It was two separate incidents, so they're not doing that. No weirdness either, ourselves, before they gave us the bid. It was that, 729 was just one concrete panel, so.
Anyone else? Thanks for taking care of the homeowner on this. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. The next is a pay request in the amount of $230,470 for water tower improvements. Trustee Harn?
Thank you again, Mayor. I make a motion, we pay the $230,000 for our tower improvements. The total we'll have left will be $32,080 in retainage. The total, this money here is for a whole big punch list of items that they've done. You can, it just goes on and on. If you guys want to get into it, we can.
Can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Harn.
Thank you. So, I make a motion, we approve payment, and we will keep the retainage until after the final inspection is done, and then they'll be back for that afterwards, so.
I think you covered that very well, so I guess we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gett, or Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is a request for the use of Peoria Heights Village Hall parking lot for the girls' basketball for car wash presented by Christopher Reese. Trustee Gett?
Thank you, Mayor Valen. Christopher is sick, so I make a motion to approve them using the Village parking lot this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 for a car wash. If they get rained out, they're looking to have it up for a date of June 9th. I guess I can't say enough about what the work he's done, and they're, they're just here, they're looking for approval so they can try and raise money for their programs on this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Questions or discussion? How do we control cars that might-
There'll be adults involved in it, and what he did last time was, at one end would be adults with the kids and everything helping, and directing the traffic to come in. And they, they line up right up here, and they pay, and then they, somebody will pull their car up, and then the girls will go to town and clean it up, and then they give it to the owners, and then they just drive off. There'd be a lot of parents involved in that.
Okay. Do we need to block off some of the parking spaces that day, or is that not-
They pretty much set up right here on this curb over here, right by tower, by the tower. And they, they set up, and they'll have like, I believe they're gonna have like concessions to sell, which Sherman's really helped out on. But I think they came and bought lunch for their entire people working there. But they'll pull up along the curb, so if you keep it clear right here on that curb right here, and maybe a couple of spots in, but they're not gonna take up much space.
Okay, just make sure they had everything they needed.
They just need somebody to be up here to-
Turn the water on.
Turn the water on. I believe, I believe they've got their own hoses. I'll double-check and make sure. I'm trying to remember, were you here, Director?
I was employed with the Village last time they did it, but I don't think we had any involvement in it.
I mean, other than somebody coming up and with the key.
She brought a key up when the JFL did it years ago.
Yeah, and I think it was Casey that did it last year. Well, he met me up here, but I have to work at my rail job Saturday, so we can get that all worked out. I kind of know a few people on Public Works, I might be able to talk to them, I don't know.
What time is that, Jeff?
11:00 to 3:00.
Okay.
As long as the weather cooperates, otherwise he would like a rain date of June 9th.
Okay, that's included in the motion?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Marisco?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Marisco?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, great, that passes. Next is a request for approval for professional services for NPDES Phase II stormwater requirements in the amount of $3,500. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, Trustee Harn?
Okay. What this is, is this is the Village's portion of an ongoing study to complete our paperwork for the NPDES, which is the National Pollution, let's see, National Pollution- Discharge Elimination System. Discharge Elimination System, yeah, sorry. It's, it's just something that we have to do for now. Eventually, people will, I think in the future, people will get billed individually by how much water is actually seeping into the ground, and how much is actually running off their property. But for now, it's just an ongoing study.
This is all part of being in compliance with the EPA, is that?
Yes. Yeah, this is, this is just a, it's a federally mandated program, and Pat Meyer, a local engineer, has put a group together that, and he's came to talk to you all before, he has put a group together that I think at this point includes probably a dozen or 15 local communities. Basically, we're all really small, we've all had trouble coming into compliance with the NPDES. But with us organized and banding together, we have a lot more strength, and we've been able, through this group, say Roanoke makes an improvement, the whole group can get credit for it. So it's, it's actually worked out real well. And then beyond that, we weren't, there were 2003 regulations that we weren't in compliance with, we certainly weren't in compliance with the 2003. So since that time, we've been, we're brought up, heard, we've come into compliance, so Pat Meyer and his group have been a tremendous help to the Village as far as coming into compliance with Illinois EPA.
Thank you guys, please keep us updated on that issue as necessary. Questions?
So the city of Peoria, this is what they're starting to implement a tax on, right?
Yes.
$3 per 100 feet or something like that?
Pretty much it. They both have to do with stormwater, but they're kind of, I mean, they're completely separate things. I mean, the city of Peoria just has a lot of deferred maintenance, culverts that they haven't replaced, that sort of thing. And that's what they're gonna be using their stormwater utility tax for.
Oh, okay.
So they're actually collecting the tax to keep it, not to pass it on up the line. Yeah, no, this is, this is a new, I'll be getting my first bill June 1st, and it has to do with, there's a calculation based upon how big your lot is and how much impervious surface you have.
Right.
And they run a calculation based on that, it'll be a monthly fee, and that is, that money is dedicated, much like our infrastructure maintenance fee was dedicated, to paying down the loan that just paid for the towers and all that. Or within the city of Peoria, this is a dedicated funding stream to start doing some stormwater repairs that they haven't done for years.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of communities, I know nobody wants to hear it, but I mean, eventually, it's probably something we're gonna have to look at too. I mean, a lot of communities have been going to this. You know, typically, the stormwater is different than your roads or your water infrastructure. I mean, improvements need to be made.
Well, this is why, isn't this the reason that the new development, the apartments on Samuel, and the new development down at Heritage Square, they were required to do some sort of runoff?
There are new standards in place that your post-construction runoff can't be any greater than what your pre-construction runoff was. So by doing your development, you just can't make things worse. And so that's what they, they have had to make stormwater improvements to-
Yeah, you just can't, you just can't let the water just-
Right, they have to compensate for all that new concrete and all those-
Right.
-grind tops, so.
And they've done that at both of our new developments, right?
Correct.
Who polices that?
That's something that I work on with Pat Meyer, the stormwater engineer that-
To make sure that everybody is in compliance, all the new development is in compliance?
Yeah, we have, we have three or four ordinances in place that we've adopted in the time that I've been here. And they, you know, there are certain parameters that you have to meet if your development is a certain size.
Very good. Anyone else? Good question. Okay, if you're ready for the main question, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Marisco?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, next is a request for approval of Peoria Heights High School Homecoming Parade on Saturday, September 29th, 2018. I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
Make a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I do. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Marisco?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Marisco?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, dispatch service agreement between the city of Peoria, Illinois and the village of Peoria Heights, Illinois. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to, for the dispatch service agreement between the city of Peoria and the village of Peoria Heights.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Trustee Carter, go ahead.
Okay, so we brought this, the chief and I brought this back on the agenda to approve because we need to move the effective date to June 1 instead of October 1. And then I'll let the chief take over from there, a little bit more detail on why.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Carter. Uh, the reason why this has been brought back to the board, we've had to change the date, obviously, from October 1 to June 1 due to, due to personnel issues. We're shorthanded, and we're going to lose other dispatchers, so we're not gonna have enough employees to actually fill a 24/7 dispatch center. So we did reach out to Peoria and ask them if that would be an option to consolidate early. They did, they did change the agreement, they signed off on the agreement. I had our bookkeeper run the numbers to make sure it wasn't gonna be a huge loss as far as cost, because we're going early, but it ends up being a savings when you take everything into consideration. That's the document that I sent out to everybody. I know Chillicothe, the other thing we had to do is to rescind the intergovernmental agreement with Chillicothe Police Department that was approved last night. So I think everything is in line for a June 1 move. You know, unfortunately, no one's a big fan of this consolidation, but it is a state mandate, so it has to be done. But we've already made, we've already started making plans to keep the window open at certain times, and I'll get into that at another date, but it'll be efficient. But we're keeping, we're retaining three employees, that is including our supervisor, so as discussed in the budget. So if I, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Out of curiosity, how much is the savings?
$21,056.
So are we going to have to change our ordinance that the window won't be open 24 hours, that they can't come in and pay fines 24 hours a day?
Well, we're going to, we're gonna, we're gonna go through a trial period and still accept fines through third shift until it becomes an issue. Now, if it becomes an issue and I have to start pulling officers off the streets to do this, then we'll, then we'll adjust. But we're gonna try it without and have them take the fines. Now, when it comes to other issues, whether it be registering sex offenders or other, other things that we, we do with walk-in traffic, that can wait till business hours. But as far as fines, to go back and change all the tickets, the, you know, the documents is pretty expensive, so let's, we're gonna take the wait-and-see approach, but-
Okay, anyone else?
I thought we had already discussed about cutting back the hours on the weekend.
Well, we did. We actually at first talked about four employees and Shane at one time, and we cut it all the way down to two and Shane.